Meeting will now come to order. We are holding the April meeting of Fayette County School Corporation's Board of School Trustees. Tonight, we have some WTCC students with us that are going to be leading us in the pledge. So would you stand if you will as they lead us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tonight, we are happy to have our school presentation. And Mr. Ely, are you going to lead the way here, please?
Good evening, President Burchett, members of the board, Dr. Hodges, and cabinet. Of course, it's always a pleasure to come before you and brag about the Career Center and our students there. But this evening, I'd like to make a, take an exception and take advantage of this moment to present an award to Beth Shank. Can I call her up here first?
Thanks, Mother.
You've heard Beth's name before many times. She's one of our leaders at the Career Center, and she's excelled herself this year in helping us with skills. She's our chairman of Skills USA at the Career Center, and the state of Indiana recognizes only one club sponsor for skills. And I'm pleased to announce this evening that Beth's the winner in the State Skills USA Advisory Award.
Pardon me. One more picture, Beth.
We've chosen to highlight certain things tonight for you. We don't have enough time to highlight everything, unfortunately, but we have three programs that were awarded, funds through a grant this year, a rural CTE grant that we applied for. Eighteen regions in the state received this grant, only eighteen out of forty-eight, up to $100,000. We received ninety-seven $500, ninety-seven thousand, five hundred dollars to update technology in three areas. The teachers are limited to time to tell you about these upgrades, so they do have a handout that'll be giving you that explains them a little bit better. But at this time, I'll call Beth back up because the second thing we're going to do this evening is share with you our success over the weekend and our state Skills USA competition. Beth?
We had a great weekend at Skills. We had a great inspirational speaker, and our conference is two days, and the students got to spend the night in Indianapolis. This year, we took forty-two Skills USA members, and thirty-nine of those forty-two competed in a total of forty competitions. We brought three observers, and seven teachers also attended. We had four first-place winners. We had one in welding, one in action skills, prepared speech, and extemporaneous speech. Three second place, one in prepared speech, technical math, and auto collision, and one team of four placed third in entrepreneurship. That's my skills report. As Mr. Ely said, we received a rural tech grant, and my section of it was to receive a sublimation printer and press. I went to the 2014 NBM Print Show in Indianapolis, and I wanted to find a white carriage paper printer because mine died. And when I went in, people said, "We'll go to an office shop." What I found was that people were printing, the graphic designers were printing to vinyl, to wood, to metal, to plastic, to cloth, to cups like you have in front of you that our students created. And then they take their graphic designs and they put them on cars, skyscrapers, anything you can think of. So with this grant, we were able to step up our program and purchase a sublimation printer. And if you take your cup and scratch it, you'll find it's not an iron-on like you've probably seen it at the craft stores. What happens is this, sublimation is a chemical process where the gel ink is printed to paper. The press heats it, it becomes a vapor, and then adheres to a substrate or a polymer. So I'm not a chemistry person, so I hope I said that right first.
Yeah.
So now it's back to a solid state. And Kevin Pamelia, he designed our graphic, interactive media graphic design logo, and he told me tonight, he said that the sublimation printing opens up new opportunities for the students. And like I said, one of my students here tonight designed that. I did bring a little sampling. I can pass it around. Mr. Ely took my Velcro today, so it falls off. Blame him. We're doing cellphone cases. There's a sample of a hardboard, a plastic, and metal. We're going to pair with the 4-H Puppy Love group and do dog tags. We can print to cloth. We can do lanyards. Like I said, it can go even larger. One printer I found, a sublimation printer at the print show, was $35,000. So if you have any money. So I wanted to introduce my student, Kevin Pamelia. He's going to tell you about his life during, during the Career Center and life after the Career Center. Like I said, Kevin designed the cups. He just steps up, he starts watching videos. Some of the companies that offer this offer training, but not in Connersville. I joined the SGIA Association to help me with some of the learning curve, and Kevin has filled in the gaps.
I'm Kevin Pamelia, and I go to Connersville High School. I was a Skills USA member, and I placed in, well, in a place, I competed in the t-shirt design. And I have, my plans are that I was accepted to the Art Institute of Indianapolis, and I plan on going into the field of graphic design.
Very good.
It could begin in June. And I brought some samples of his work. You've seen them before. He designed a CHS yearbook hand cover for this current year. These are his t-shirt designs. Only ten students in the state of Indiana were chosen to compete out of all the designs turned in, and Kevin and Jacob Crane were the two from the Career Center. And Kevin also did a graphic design resume. This is some of Kevin's words. And I'm going to introduce Richard Beaver, who's going to tell about his portion of the grant and introduce his student.
I'm Rick Beaver. My part of the grant, or my program's part of the grant, we bought a CNC water jet machine. We have CNC mills, lasers, and water jets kind of new technology. It works with just water and garnet. It takes tap water, compresses it to 55,000 PSI, puts a stream of garnet, an abrasive like sand, and we can cut steel, aluminum. We can cut soft materials like plastic leather with just water and garnet. So with our CNC laser, the kids would make parts, but they weren't functional. We'd make them out of plastic, plywood, so they get their design. Now we can prototype those with non-functional because it's cheap with the laser, then we can make functional parts with the CNC water jet. And being new technology, there's a lot of shops that there's nobody that's got experience. So they get experienced kids, but a big aspect of water jets maintenance, and for every hour uptime, you have about 10 minutes downtime, and that's just preventative maintenance. So my kids learn all these aspects of maintenance on the machine, too, besides programming. I brought one of my students, Bo Blevins, and Bo's co-op at Nixon Tool Company. I worked at Nixon Tool for thirteen years before I started teaching, so I try and take my best students, you know, to all the big shops. Well, Scott Nixon, owner of the company, called me last Wednesday, I think it was, and says, "Rick, we need to talk about your boy." And I was like, "Oh, gosh, don't give me a bad report on Bo." And he leads me into, you know, that's the way it's going. And he says, "I couldn't ask for a better student. He's doing awesome." So then, you know, I could start breathing again. But Bo's going to tell you what Nixon Tool offered him, and I've had a few other students go through the program, but it's a pretty awesome deal. Go ahead, Bo.
I'm Bo Blevins. I go to the Career Center. I'm working at Nixon Tool. They allow me to be in the apprenticeship program, which after four years, I'm going to be a journeyman, which they pay for the college. I work full-time.
Excellent.
How much do you make an hour?
I don't know, I make eight dollars an hour. But after the apprenticeship program, I'll be making seventeen dollars an hour.
That's not a work.
Right now, Bo's just one of nine seniors that are co-ops, and every student I have that's co-op currently, their employer's paying for all their college. And that's really unheard of. But I'm real proud of Bo and his students. Next, we've got Phil Baywell. He's going to get a little demonstration of his welding simulator.
All right. We were fortunate enough to be a part, to be a part of this grant that Mr. Ely and Beth really did a lot of work with, and it allowed us to get a whole new aspect for our training program. We were able to get two new machines. One is the welding simulator from Lincoln that you see here, and we're going to show you a quick demonstration here in just a few minutes. If anybody wants to actually use it, you can come up to the Career Center and see me. I'll let you use it anytime you want. But we're also able to get a CNC plasma cutter. So now, we're able to cut out shapes and designs off of a computer or CAD-operated system, which will allow us to integrate more closely with Mr. Beaver's program because he already does the CAD and the drafting type situations with his CNC programs that he has. So it uses, utilizes the same similar software, and we'll be able to pull that into our new machine and cut out shapes and designs and get these kids into a whole different aspect of the welding industry. Currently, we have students who come out of the program who are certified welders. They can get jobs in virtually any welding industry, from production all the way to construction, manufacturing, anything that involves any kind of application or welding used, and they can go virtually anywhere. Right now, welding is a huge, huge demand, so my students are really, you know, have a bright future in that respect. I did bring one with me tonight, Mr. Ross Wyatt. He is the Midwest Welding Tournament winner this year, which is the Midwest Welding Tournament is a four-state contest that's put on in Indianapolis. He got first place in shielded metal arc welding or stick welding, and he is the state skills winner this year. He's one of the ones that'll be going to Kansas City or to Louisville this year in June for Skills USA. So he's a junior. I'm looking forward to next year. I got him another year, so hopefully we'll have another year of winners. We'll see how it goes, but I'll let him talk to you just a little bit.
I'm Ross Wyatt. I'm from, I'm a junior at Rushville High School, and I've enjoyed welding ever since I was little. I've been welding since I was probably ten. Planning to go to Hobart after I graduate high school, from the Career Center, too. And I'd like to be a pipeline welder.
I will keep this short. This machine is the virtual welder. Now, the best part about this is that if I have a student who is struggling, I can bring them in and put them on this machine, and it gives its, the computer gives its own prompts as to what they're doing wrong. But more importantly, if I have a student that, say, can't go to the shop for whatever health reasons, I've had two or three this year. One had a knee surgery, so he couldn't stand for any length of time. Well, in the shop, you can't weld while you're sitting down. Sparks are too dangerous. It's not a congruent to do that. But I can leave him in the classroom where there's no sparks, using, utilizing this machine, and he doesn't lose that hands-on shop time. Now, if you direct your attention to the screen, this is the virtual reality machine. I see that right here in my eyesight, so when I look at, when I'm looking around the shop, this is what I see. So I am totally immersed in a virtual reality world, and I can look down here, and there's my coupon holder and my weld coupon, and then I've got my weld gun right there. As you can see, it's detailed enough that even the wire comes out. Okay? When we go to weld, I can hold it, you know, and it actually makes the sounds and weld like it would real. So, I mean, you know, it's about as real as you can get without actually doing it. It is an awesome machine that has lots and lots of features. It also gives me options, and it didn't record it, but this screen will record the data that I'm using here, and it will actually give the student instant feedback for a score. So they can try to get their score up to eighty, ninety, a hundred percent as they're doing it. So the machine itself is really a huge advance in the technology that we have available to our students. And also, it gives me a rotatable view of the weld that I just made, and even better, I can make it an assignment because I can, if I plug a thumb drive into my, into my machine here, I can have the student save this screen, and it will then, I can print it off later and use it as a grade in the grade book for a completed assignment. So not only does it help them and train them, I can actually use it as a recordable score and document their progress. Here's what they started with, here's what they ended with at the end of the day, show the progress that the machine was able to help them with. So it is an amazing piece of technology. I would love to have two or three more of these. Obviously, we're going to try to get some grants to do that. We understand. But, you know, this is, this is where the future of welding is going. It will never go completely digital, I can tell you that, because there is no substitute for actually doing it. But this will speed the process up because it gets them, and they love it. The kids think this is just a giant video game. They love it. I mean, the first time I brought it into my class this time, they were all over it. It was all I could do to get them to get off of it and go out and shop. They wanted to run this. So they love it, and they'll use it, and that's what we want. We want them to run it and use it.
How much does one of those cost?
This was $20,000, and this was the small one. There's a big brother that's not a portable one, this is a portable, that's $40,000, but this is more than what we need. There are cheaper ones out there, but you don't get the complete immersed feeling. They're not near as equipped as these are.
How many years you think you'd be able to use?
Utilize this machine?
Yeah. I mean, does it need updates or anything like that?
Any software updates are free from the company. Lincoln is very good about that. The computer inside, I would say you'll get the life of any major computer. I mean, I would say five to six years minimum, probably more, because they're going to make, I mean, it does nothing except do the welding simulation. I really don't have any idea exactly how long the lifespan would be, but I would say at least seven to 10 years, maybe, without any trouble at all.
That's pretty awesome.
Yeah, it's an amazing, amazing piece of technology. So we're proud to have it.
Before he puts it away, anybody want to try it here with the audience and TV cameras rolling?
Scott West wants to try it.
I just want to give you that opportunity.
Thanks, Phil. All right, thanks.
Thank you.
I just want to conclude by saying that Mr. Duncan's been really busy the last month or two with enrollment forms, and I think, what are we, over 500 now, Steve?
More than something five.
So we're looking for another good year next year at the Career Center. So that concludes our three kind of presentations, and we can open it up for any questions. Mr. Burchett?
Don't have a question, but I'd sure like to say congratulations to the students and to your teachers. Thank you so much for being here, and appreciate a very interesting report. So you guys are doing a great job up there. Keep up the great work. So thank you all for, for being here. Does anybody else have a question or?
I think this is so over our heads, we don't know how to ask a question, probably.
All right, if you would like to stay with us, you're welcome to do so, but if you would like to leave.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir. You've seen some of those cars in the garage they're on there. Schools don't even, they could buy it own. NASCARs. Or maybe they're owned by students.
They still do those competitions? Won't they do some competitions occasionally, like robotics and stuff like that, or was that high school? Because I'm worried. I mean, some cars. Was this high school?
No, they're not, because there's the, there were some funding issues.
Daryl died in the car or something.
Well, yeah, it was Connersville Robotics, and they had a team, and they got private sponsorship, and then it lost us. There were some issues with coach at the high school.
Okay, we are ready to move on. I need a motion to approve the agenda as submitted.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. President.
Do the agenda submit?
Thank you. Do I hear a second?
I'll second that.
Mr. Hunt, any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the motion carries. Are there any patron comments on agenda items tonight? Seeing none, we move right on into the consent agenda. Our consent agenda, a little bit lengthy, but we'll go through it here. The approval of minutes from the regular business meeting of March 10, 15, and executive meeting of March 10, 2015. The personnel report, which included retirements, resignations, leaves of absence, et cetera. The approval of the March 2015 Claims Number 38613 through Number 38913. Several donations. WTCC was awarded a donation for Blinch Car Wash, Car Quest, and Danny Hall, a total of $150, to help with the cost of a WTCC student's expenses during the state skills USA. WTCC received a donation of 34 power tools valued at $1,520 from the Tractor Supply of Connersville. WTCC received a donation of a diesel engine from Cummins Crosspoint LLC valued at $1,500. A donation of $2,000 from Nixon Tool Company Incorporated for WTCC. A donation of $125 from Ohio Auto Color Incorporated, and $70 from Danny Hall for Skills USA expenses. A donation of clothing valued at $1,207.58 for the CHS Corner Store from the Label Shopper. A grant for Fayette County School Corporation Kindergarten Jump Start Program from the Fayette County Foundation valued at $34,101.48. Also, excuse me, also included is approval of the Head Start Non-Federal Share and Transportation waiver request. Do I hear a motion to accept the consent agenda?
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Hilton?
Do I move to accept the consent agenda, please?
Thank you. Do I hear a second?
I'll second that motion.
Thank you, Mrs. Boye. Are there any comments or questions?
Oh, Mr. Burchett, what is this FCAS kindergarten jump start program? That's a huge amount of money. What's that, what's that for?
One of you will have to help us here.
Well, I think, I think we're going to give them the opportunity to talk about that a little bit, but the two, we're going to run a, for the first time, a two-week jump start prior to kindergarten starting for incoming kindergarten students. This grant will allow us to pay teachers to run the program. We will be able to have up to two classrooms per every building across the corporation. We'll be providing transportation for the students to come in. We'll be providing breakfast. We'll be providing lunch for them at no charge, and we'll also be having some parent workshops during that two-week period. So we're excited about that, and there'll be, there'll be a lot of publicity coming out over that. It's been a great partnership between Fayette County School Corporation and the foundation. We're so, so thrilled with that partnership. I think when we first talked to them, they realized the need, and they were more than willing to step up. So I've probably stolen all of their thunder. I told them they would have an opportunity to speak when we're done.
That's just a huge amount of.
It is. I think it may be the largest grant that they've, they've awarded.
The largest in the last decade.
Largest in the last decade.
You look at $34,000, and you go, whoa.
Yeah, that's not a typo.
And that's flexible, Ann, so.
That's flexible?
Yes.
So from what I'm understanding, and I don't want to steal your thunder, but at a time, two weeks before school starts.
Yes.
And that could be a huge evaluate of tool. You know what hand you've been dealt before school starts.
Well, as we've talked about, you know, there, our teachers are having students come to them less prepared each and every year, and this is a hope that we will get them not only acclimated to school, but beginning, begin to work on some skills with them. And also, the part that I really love is, is the parent involvement with that, and we hope that that is as successful as the rest of it. So it's, it's a big undertaking. It's a costly undertaking, and with the generosity of foundation, it's, we're going to make it happen this year. And the hope is, if it's as successful as we hope that it will be, that there's a possibility this, the funding will be ongoing.
Because we, we had talked about Head Start being cut, and there were so many children that, and the cost of private preschool, and so many children just come to kindergarten without having had any school experience at all. So this would fill, fill that gap.
Absolutely.
That's really cool.
Absolutely. It is.
Okay, any other discussion? A motion has been made, and second, that we accept the consent agenda. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the motion carries. Next, we'll move into the. I think the foundation folks are here. They'd like to say a little bit if we could. Okay, we'll, we'll do that at this point, then. Who is going to make the presentation?
Okay, did you want to say something or do some folks?
Yeah, I'd like to say something.
It's a little out of the ordinary, but as we say, this is a very large, a very large grant, so with your pleasure, we'll, we'll take a little extra time with this.
That's nice. This is Kathryn Good. Some of you, I think, already know her. She's one of the program directors for it, and we are, I can't tell you how excited we are because this program will be in every elementary in Fayette County School Corporation. This is Patricia O'Leary. Patricia and Trish Fields both were very involved with the writing of the grant, and this is just such a great opportunity for any child that's coming into kindergarten. We're doing registration a little bit differently this year. It's going to be May 12th and 13th, from 3:00 until 6:00 p.m. Either day, parents can come, but while they're there, they will sign up for the jump start program, and we'll do a little assessment with them. We've met with the preschool directors in the area, and they're going to help us out by doing assessments of children that they have that would be ready for kindergarten. And I'm really excited because tomorrow, I'm going to meet with the teachers that will be teaching this, as well as the counselors, and we're going to kind of talk about the daily schedule, the supplies that they need, and all of that. And we're hoping that we can give them not only some academic information like phonics and math and some of those things, but also fine and gross motor skills. A lot of kids come to kindergarten, and they just don't have the hand, you know, the dexterity to write, and so it'll help with that. And then the biggest part for us is going to be just helping them with procedures and, you know, how do you sit for a period of time? How do you walk down the hallway? All of that, because they'll be in their home school, so it'll be a familiar place for them, and they can kind of act as role models to those kids that maybe are not coming, you know, to jump start because of a vacation or something like that. So, you know, I think that Kathryn's just as excited as I am about this, and I'm so glad that they, you know, decided to get behind this and to back us, and it'll be the inaugural year, so we're really excited about it.
It's going to be a great summer, I think. We've been working on this since the fall, and I've really got to hand it to all your elementary principals and all those kindergarten teachers for thinking of this idea, because the foundation's just here to make ideas possible. So, we were just, when we got that idea come across our desk, we were ecstatic, because we have an initiative for early childhood education, so this fit perfectly. And the way the funding will work is if we get those six classes, that's great. But if we get 12, the funding is there for 12, too. So, we really want to fill every seat we can fill. So, we are on board, and we are, we're not going anywhere. So, we are really excited. And I really hope in a few months into school, next fall, the teachers are like, gosh, that was great. So, that's our hope, that we're excited to.
So, is transportation provided?
It's provided for them. So, there's really, unless they're on vacation, there's really no excuse not to come.
And it's, it's open to any incoming kindergarten student. There, there's no, that's only qualification.
Right.
That was my question, because, you know, Head Start children tend to have those skills, some of those prior, so it's open to both.
Yes, it's open to anyone that would like to come. You know, like I said, we're going to give them a short assessment that looks at ABCs and counting and that type of thing. But really, we would like anybody to come, because, you know, if you have some kids that already know that, the other ones can learn from them, so.
Is it a, is it a full-day program?
It's a half-day. It's from 8:00 until 12:00.
Ever see breakfast when they come?
And lunch, and lunch before, lunch before they come.
And have prizes to get those parents to bring the kids in, and I think that's good.
Then we plan on having three parent programs during that time with our counselors and social workers with the parents during that same time that the kids are in school.
Excellent.
And they're all excited, too. They're going to meet with us tomorrow as well, so.
And then there's, there'll be some, you could really see how it worked, because the data that you would generate from, from those kids that have been through that program would be a good indicator if the program is doing what you needed to do, or allow you to tweak it, because you're going to have an opportunity that you've not had before.
That's right.
That's really cool.
And that's another great thing about this program, is that our teachers came up with it. Our teachers, our principals. It's not somebody else's program that we're trying to make fit in Fayette County. It fits our county, because our teachers thought of it. And, and you're exactly right. When they see what's not working, that's what we're going to fix for next summer, so.
Any other questions?
No, but it's great.
I know.
It's just great. So, we're looking forward to-
Really excited.
You guys have to stop by the elementary school.
That's right. Anytime between July 13th and 24th, we'll be there, okay? So, you're welcome.
It's going to be at every elementary school.
It's going to be at every elementary. It kind of depends on enrollment, but we're hoping that it will be at every elementary school, so they can attend their home school.
A special thank you to Pat, I guess, and Trish for making this, doing all the paperwork. Is that, did I hear that correctly?
They had the, they had the hard part. I get the fun part of talking to everybody.
Well, everybody that's involved, so. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Wonderful.
In anticipation of your positive vote tonight, we did our podcast this month on the kindergarten Jump Start Program. So, if you want to listen to that this month, well, you're more than welcome to do that. You'll hear a lot of the same things, but maybe there's some things that we filled in during that that you didn't hear. But we're excited and appreciate the partnership.
Okay, moving on then to our action items. We have a personnel report. Dr. Bayer?
Thank you, Mr. Burchett, Dr. Hodges, members of the board. We have several persons for your consideration this evening. First off, in order to continue to see the great things going on at the Career Center, we've put ourselves in a position to move Mr. Duncan from the Associate Director into the Director's Leadership Position beginning July 1st of 2015 with your approval. We're excited about that. We've received substantive background information on Mr. Duncan. Support staff members, Jeremiah Mitchell as Maintenance Department, effective April 6, 2015. Jane Townsend as an Educational Assistant at Everton, effective March 30, 2015. And also, this is the time of year that we request authorization to issue support. Two of the support staff, personnel, bus drivers, substitute teachers and substitute custodians, a letter of reasonable assurance. What that does, it protects us from unemployment being collected over the summer. It protects the school corporation. We do this annually. It also gives the employees a reasonable assurance they will be returning in the fall in a position equal to or similar to what they've done in the past. And they'll be able to intend to reemploy for the 2015, 2016 school year. So, those persons and that recommendation were your consideration this evening, Mr. Burchett.
Thank you, sir. Not to catch off guard, but how many retiring teachers do we have at this point, approximately?
About four, four, five. We're, we're, it's still early, but, yeah. Just age, not, not as numbers we had in the past.
Sure, okay. Okay, thank you. You've heard the personnel report. Do I hear a motion to accept the recommendation for employment?
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Hilton.
I move to accept the recommendation, sir.
Okay, do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Kirschner. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and the motion carries. Now, we have the approval of the 2016-17 school calendar, Dr. Hodges.
Board, last month, we presented the 16-17 calendar to you for discussion. It's the first time that I'm aware of that we've tried to do two years' worth of calendars. I've not had any negative feedback on that. So, hearing none, I will bring this back to you and recommend that you adopt the 2016-2017 calendar as presented.
There was some really good feedback that I got on the calendar from having the date before Thanksgiving. It was like, whoa. Yeah, that was, that was extremely popular.
Good. I said that it would be a pilot next year. I don't know that we'll ever get it out.
No, I, I think it's one of those, the ship has sailed on that one.
And, that's in 2016. It's not next year, 2016.
Yeah, that was when they were looking at the calendar. That was a very popular point in the, of the people that I spoke to. Very pleased with that.
Do I hear a motion to approve the 2016-17 school calendar?
I'll still move.
Thank you, Ms. Kirschner. Do I hear a second?
I'll second that motion.
Thank you, Ms. Seboy. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and the motion carries. Next, we have the elementary CMS, CHS, WTCC Discipline Plan, and Bus Conduct, and the Fayette County School Corporation's Code of Conduct. Dr. Hodges?
Board, this was presented to you last, last month, and I think went over the changes with you in those various plans. We're bringing that back to you tonight for approval. If you have questions, we have people in the audience that are prepared to answer those for you. If you have no questions, the recommendation is to adopt those as presented.
There really are not that many changes. It's just more of a dates and a few of-
Changes in status of things. But nothing major.
Right. So, do I hear a motion to approve these items?
Mr. President, I'd like to make the motion to approve the item.
Thank you, Mr. Hunt. Do I hear a second?
I'll second the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Hilton. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and the motion carries. Next, the continuation of the food service agreement with Chartwell's for 2015-16 school year. Dr. Bayer?
Thank you again, Mr. Burchett. Yes, we entered into a contract with the Chartwell's and are providing food service program an 11-12 school year. With that contract, it comes for initial, for continuous one-year renewals. And this will be our fourth and final renewal with Chartwell's, based on our agreement. Changes in that each year, there's an increase for management administrative fees. That increase will be 3.7%. That is outlined in our contract with the Section 10.3 Administrative Fees, 10.4 Management Fees, and 10.5 Computing Meals. The Bureau of Labor Statistics which oversees the Consumer Price Index for the Midwest area, it determines that increase each year for each region. Basically, the 3.7% increase results in about a 3 cent increase per meal from .75 cents to .078 cents. And also, a management fee, which would be $326 per month for that service. Equivalent meal factor for 15-16 remains at $2.04, and that equivalent meal factor simply means the number of alacard items sold, which determine a regular meal, and the state dictates that. Next year, the bid process will be used as we conclude and outsource our food service program again, since our current contract includes. And that, those bids will go out sometime in January. We'll look at that, and any bidders may apply and send in information in to us. I believe Chartwell's is on the right track. I would ask that you support our continued agreement for the 15-16 school year. That was my recommendation.
All right, you've heard the recommendation. Do I hear a motion to continue food service agreement with Chartwell's next school year?
I still move.
Thank you, Ms. Kirschner. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Spurlock. Any further discussion?
Food's good. I do. It's, it's good. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, all of those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and the motion carries.
Thank you.
Now, we have the lunch breakfast price mandated increases for 2015-16. Dr. Bayer, you again.
Yeah, one more time, thank you, Mr. Burchett. About five years ago, the Healthy Hunger Free Kids Act was instituted to ensure sufficient funds are provided to serve healthy meals to students outlined by the U.S. Department of Agriculture. And for a 10-year period, we needed to eventually increase all lunches to a minimum of $2.72 per meal for lunch and $1.70 for breakfast. And on the back of your handout and your board information, it listed the progression of those year by year. And so, as a result of that, and needing to, that being mandated to us, we would look at the following prices beginning to effect for 15-16. And that would be an elementary lunch, we'd go from $2.10 to $2.20, 10 cents. Secondary lunch from $2.30 to $2.40. Breakfast will go up a nickel from $1.40 to $1.45. Adult lunches, $3.10. Adult breakfast, $1.90. And all alacard items would be increased by a nickel. This will allow us to continue to maintain our expectation for lunch prices. I recommend that you accept the recommendation for this price increase for 2015 and 2016.
Okay. You've heard the recommendation. What is your pleasure?
I recommend that we accept the prices for, for this year.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Hilton. Do I hear a second?
I'll second that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and the motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have the approval of the Hall of Fame 2015 Inductee, Dr. Hodges.
Board, the selection committee, composed of Ralph Burchett, Ben Felver, Cindy Perez, Laura West, and myself, met, reviewed the applications that were submitted, and we are bringing the recommendation of Marjorie Jaeger as this year's inductee into the Fayette County School Corporation Education Hall of Fame.
Okay, you've heard the recommendation from Dr. Hodges. What is your pleasure?
Mr. President, I'd like to make the motion to approve Marjorie Jaeger as the Hall of Fame 2015 Inductee.
Thank you, Ms. Seboy. Do I hear a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Any further discussion?
How many candidates were there? Because typically, there's more than one that's elected.
Two.
Two?
Yes.
Wow. Small, small group this year?
Small group this year, yes.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and the motion carries. Are there any public comments to be made? Okay, seeing none, we move into the report items. Superintendent's Discussion Group Report. Principal Director Reports. Director Personnel Report.
Yes, Mr. Burchett, just two items you would ask about the number of positions to fill, and with retirees being four, we'll be looking at between six and 10 positions at this point to replace for the 15-16 school year. That is significantly down from past year. I'm not disappointed in that number being lower. But we'll be, we're on the trail right now for recruiting. And in fact, on Thursday, Mrs. Dunham and Mr. Jobe will be joining me up over in Oxford, I believe, to look at some potential teachers for openings they have. And we'll continue to bring to you the best candidates we can for our children, and we're looking forward to doing that. And then our retirement dinner, I believe you received a letter of invitation. If you haven't had an opportunity to crystal call, we'd love to have you there on May 4th. It's a Monday, two weeks, three weeks from yesterday. And it's a very nice evening, and we'll be recognizing not only our certified teachers, but also non-certified employees who have given us many years of service and would like to dollars to recognize their efforts.
Thank you. Director of Finance Report.
Thank you, Mr. Burchett. I just want to point out to everyone that their packet for Thursday's Special Board Meeting at 8:30 is at your places. There are three separate items related to the summer bid project, and then one document related to the request for the waiver of implementation of protected taxes. So, if you have any questions as you review this before the meeting on Thursday, just send me an email or give me a call, and I'll be happy to answer. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Rick is not here, so do you have anything to cover in your place?
I do. I have a few things for you this evening. First, my first, but again, I want to thank the foundation for, for their support of our kindergarten Jump Start Program. We are excited about that. You may recall, about five years ago, there were significant changes in the sector dealing with collective bargaining. And as part of that, we were told we would need to submit our contracts for review. And you kind of always wondered, did anybody ever review those things? Or is that an activity that we just go through just because we have to? Well, just this afternoon, I received an email with a, with a detachment from the Department of Ed that says that they have reviewed our contract for this year. And they looked at three factors. The first one being that we have to have a combination of two or more factors before we can consider increases or raises, those being experience and/or education, performance evaluation results, assignment of instructional leadership roles, the academic needs of students in the school. And they found that that was on our contract, and our contract meets that, that standard. The next piece says, "A teacher's experience education accommodation of the two may account for no more than 33% of the calculation used to determine a stipend or salary increase." And they found that in our contract, and they said that we were in compliance with that. And the last part said, "It cannot allocate any stipend or salary raise, increment or increase in the following year to teachers rated ineffective or improvement necessary by an evaluation conducted under a specific statute." They found that language in our contract. They found us to be in compliance. So, at this point in time, we're in compliance with the expectations of the DOE. That'll be submitted to the State Board for, for their approval. So, congratulations to Dr. Bayer and the negotiating team for making that happen. At your place tonight, I had originally made two, copies of two newspaper articles. It was talking about a situation down in Atlanta. You may recall that there was some cheating on some standardized tests. It talked about the penalties that, that could possibly be attached to that misconduct. Well, this afternoon, they handed those down. Two people took plea agreements, and the others had some pretty significant jail time and fines associated with this misbehavior. According to CNN, the cheating is believed to date back to 2001, when scores on statewide aptitude tests improved greatly, according to a 213 indictment. The indictment also states that for at least four years, between 2005 and 2009, test scores were altered, fabricated, or falsely certified. Anything that you can imagine that could involve cheating, it was done. You know, as we talk about high-stakes testing, and we talk about the impact on kids and the pressure they're, they're under, there's a lot of pressure on teachers, and a lot of pressure on, on administrators. And I guess the thing, if we want to say there's a surprise, is that there haven't been more of these things brought forward. I think there was a charter school in Indianapolis that was disbanded this fall because of irregularities on the testing. So, some people take that stuff very, very seriously. The last thing I want to say is that I appreciate the opportunity to attend the NSBA Conference. I shared a little bit of that with you in, in some of the Friday letters. I will tell you that online, if you go to NSBA Conference, they already have the 2016 conference up. But if you read through, there is a link where you can click on that, and you can get PowerPoints and handouts from the majority of the sessions that were at this last year. I want to comment on a couple of them. We did hear Montel Williams. We did hear Jane Pauli, and they are both strong advocates of public schools. And that's great to hear that. A person who had, has, I think has had a lot of attention here in our community. She spoke again there, Ruby Payne, talking on poverty. She has updated her book. The thought that I had when I was listening to her, and I remember when I came, there was a lot of talk about generational poverty. There was a lot of concern about where we were, where we were at. were, where we were at, and listening to her talk, I think we have more families in that poverty range than we had when we came, and so that's a concern. There were some ideas that she shared, I'll be sharing more of those with you, but maybe there are some things that we might be able to do to try to reach out and help families and do some things here. That's exciting, and I think one of the first steps that I'm really excited about is what's happening with the Jump Start and trying to get some parents involved in some training there. I also had the opportunity to hear one of my favorite speakers, and that's Bill Daggett. Bill has always been kind of on that cutting edge of things in education. He was the first one that developed the rigor and relevance quadrants, where he talks about we need to know what it is that kids need to know and be able to do to be successful. He talked about moving kids to what he calls Quadrant D, solving real-world unpredictable problems. One of the things that he talked about down there was the phrase that we hear a lot of, "College and career ready." And he said the most important word in that college and career ready is the word "and," because many times, we think it's college or career, and sometimes we think college, there's more emphasis on the college piece than there is on the career, and I think he had some testimony tonight that maybe that isn't the way that it ought to be. One of the things that he showed, he said, he said really that the standard for career ready sometimes is a higher standard than it is for college. He talked about, it was really kind of interesting, he asked the group the question, "What's the purpose of third grade?" People said, "Get kids ready for fourth grade." "What's the purpose of fourth grade?" "Get your kids ready for fifth grade." And he went all the way through, "What's the purpose of college?" Or, "High school." "To get kids ready for college." So he says, "So the purpose of school is school." And he said, "But then, national statistics, national studies says that freshmen entering two-year colleges, almost 52% of them need remediation to move forward." And in two, in four-year colleges, it's more around 20%. Now that's not that hard to believe, that there's that kind of discrepancy between those two institutions. We think of typically the age and the experience of people going to the two-year colleges opposed to the four-year college. That's pretty disturbing. This wasn't part of his presentation, but I've seen this before, and I thought I would share this with you and talk again about the difference between college and career ready. These are Lexile scores. Lexile is really a reading level type thing, and it can either be where a student is or what the expectations are for everything. First bar there on your left, it talks about where high school literature is. You move over to the third one, that says where high school textbooks are, the higher up the scale, the more difficult the reading level. And you can see where college textbooks are, that's the next one over, and so it leads quite nicely into where high school is. That little box that you see, that's Lexile level for people entering the military, and the reading level that they need to be able to read the technical manuals. And then you go over to the next, the last column, and you can see entry-level occupations. Now we're talking about, you've heard the term here used a lot of times, about informational text, reading technical manuals, and those kinds of things, and you can see the difference. And so when you look at that, what is really the higher standard, at least in the Lexile piece? Getting kids prepared so they can reach, read college textbooks, or getting kids ready to be able to read technical journals and moving forward. The other interesting piece is, that last bar is where the SAT and the ACT is, and that's really below where entry-level occupations are. And so as we think about trying to help prepare kids for that next level, whatever it is, and I think we're doing a good job with that, but I just thought I would share with that, that being an important piece. Lot of stuff throughout the whole conference on technology, talked a lot about that, not so much about the latest gadgets like we saw tonight and those kinds of things, but talking about just a tremendous explosion in apps, and the things that they can do, how inexpensive they are, but the power that they pack. But he showed, this goes back to Bill Daggett, he showed two things that, to me, were really, really powerful. It has nothing to do with this being the Pope, it just happened to be when the Pope was visiting in 2005. Here's a picture of the crowd. And if you look real hard, right down here in this corner, you see a flip phone, and that appears to be the only technology that we see in 2005. The Pope came back in 2014, and look at all the devices, okay? Now, the room chuckled, and the more I thought about it, and I came back, and if my math is right, our seniors were in second grade in 2005. Think about how technology has changed since then. What's technology gonna look like when our second graders are seniors? That's a challenge, that's a real challenge. You may remember back in, when I did my state of the schools, we talked about students being in high school a thousand hours, a thousand hours a year, and being connected to technology, social media for 4,000 hours. How do we bridge that gap? How do we make those connections and make school meaningful for kids? That's our challenge moving forward. I don't know that I totally agree with this statement that Bill Daggett made, because even today, I was in a couple elementary schools, looking at some things happening in, even in our primary grades, and I think we are making some strides in the area of technology, but he says, "Technology has transformed how children play and interact. It has transformed the workplace they will enter, but it has not transformed how we educate them." And that's, that's our challenge. How do we make those connections? How do we help prepare our kids for the next level? How do we ensure, do the best we can to make sure that they're gonna be successful in whatever they do? So that's kind of a little bit of my reflection on the NSBA conference. And that's all I have for this evening. Thank you.
Next, we'll move into, for the good of the cause, and I will, 'cause I went, I will just give you a couple minutes on what I learned from the conference. At first, we did not think I was going to go, and then I just, 'cause I'd been to everyone that, since I've been on the school board, 'cause it is three days of meetings, of sitting, it's a long day, but I'm really glad that I went, because I thought that Jane Pauli and Montel, Pauli and Montel Williams were just outstanding, and I really appreciated them talking about teachers that they had had, and what those teachers had done to make them be successful where they are, and what they have done with their lives. A thread that I heard throughout the conference, it just seemed to appear in almost every session, was, "Do students matter to you? And do the students know that?" And I thought, wow, that really is a pretty powerful statement. How the theme conference, for the whole conference was, "Their futures start with you." The sessions that I attended was mattering, is the agenda. Ten Great Things About Public Education That You'll Never Hear in the News Media. Unraveling Parliamentary Procedure. Recognizing and Dealing with Adult Bullying. And then I heard the presentation by Scott McCombs from Maryland, he is the National Teacher of the Year, and Jim Spello's. Every year, I've gone to his, and it's always about hot technologies, and after being in there about two minutes, I realize the world has gone off and left me. But it is absolutely amazing, the programs that you can download, and you know, some of them, you don't want the students to know about it, but he showed us one where they all have to run this camera thing over, and it solves the math problem for them. So it's just unbelievable. So notice I didn't say where to go to get it.
I was wondering where you were going. I chose not to mention that.
But anyway, it was a great conference, and I appreciate the opportunity of getting to go. Anybody else work for the good of the cause?
I'd just like to thank our community for their support as usual. The School Corporation reaped a lot of benefits from our community, and in addition to that, the Career Center, when our community donates to the Career Center, those guys know what to do with it, and they really appreciate it, so big thanks to the community.
Very good. Anybody else? Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Salute.
Mr. Taylor, Mr. Hilton, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the meeting is adjourned.
Yes, we'll see you Thursday.